Please stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The meeting is ordered at 7:05 PM. We'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments?
There's only one public here.
It's the only one that matters.
The only public that matters. Oh, okay, all right. Seeing as though there's no public comment, but don't worry, Attorney Stanek, we will give you a second bite at the apple later on in the meeting, just in case.
You did the sign sheet.
You're in. All right, item number four, approved minutes from the November 20, 2018 regular meeting. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all in favor. Opposed. Abstained. Chair votes aye since I signed them. Motion passes 6-0-1, and please note Mrs. Stanek's abstention. Okay, I'm number five, First Selectmen's Report. So I have it on a bunch of stickies today. Okay, the Wendy's is, site is all set and approved. It's passed all of the needed boards. The project should begin, probably say in the next month or two. The property is being transferred from the owner to Wendy's Corporate Holdings. So once that is done, everything will, the construction will begin. Tulie and Basement Systems is still on target for spring 2019. There's actually an update meeting tomorrow, which will be attended by Brian Asteriak and Jim Baldwin, so we'll have more updates on that. But that's heading along, as we had talked about. That's the 80,000 square foot building and the first of the two 1.5 million dollar tube cutters. The issue with PNS paving over on North Main Street, it looks like it has reached some tentative agreements that should go into effect at some point in January. PNS will be coming in front of all the appropriate boards to get updated permits and things. So that's a good settlement for this. And finally, in this one, glad everybody's sitting down. The demolition permit for Trittown Plaza was given out yesterday. The fencing should be going up tomorrow, is my understanding, and interior demolition will begin tomorrow. They expect it will take about two months to demo the entire place. So there'll be an article in tomorrow's New Haven Register, is my understanding, and Mr. Specter is being quoted in the article. So just to give everybody a heads up on that. So, that's the First Selectmen's Report. That's why I'm glad everyone is seated.
Kirk, I have a quick question. When is the Wendy's opening going to be approximately?
If they stay on the schedule, I would expect late spring, early summer. Take a couple of months to build it and everything else. There's very limited, they agreed to no blasting. So there's a little section that they have to go in, they have to jackhammer, or they use a giant, like, pin thing that they go down and whack away. So that's all they have to do for land. Other than that, the land is set, so it's a matter of just putting the foundation in and just go. So it should be relatively quick. Next to Walgreens opposite pad, and this is Wendy's corporate. So this is not...
Oh, it's not a restaurant, I see.
No, well, this is owned by the corporation.
Oh, okay.
Wendy's.
It's not a franchise.
It's not a franchise, thank you, it's not a franchise. So it's Wendy's corporate, yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, that's my understanding. Jim Baldwin, Jim Baldwin's on top of it. So, you know, and a lot of this stuff is a testament to Jim Baldwin. He worked really hard to get the Wendy's thing through. He worked very hard on Tulie and Basement Systems, pushing that through, working with the contractors. He worked very hard on this Trittown demo permit, so a lot of the credit goes to him. So the changes that we made to redo that department, bring Jim on full time, they're paying for themselves. All right, item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding Naveen Madhavila. I never say his name right. Yeah, I never, I haven't said his name right since the kid was 13, but proclamation. So Naveen is unable to be with us tonight. Naveen received his Eagle Scout Award a week ago Saturday. I've had the privilege to know Naveen since he was younger, actually coached him a couple of years in soccer, very good kid. Smart kid, hardworking, dedicated. So I wanted to do this proclamation for him to celebrate his Eagle Scout Award. And then we'll set up a time for him to come, and we'll take the nice pictures and everything else. So the proclamation, whereas, "The Boy Scouts of America is a wonderful organization that shapes young men of character and conviction through community service and education. And whereas attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout represents a significant achievement involving the learning of crucial skills and the completion of a comprehensive project in the community. And whereas, Naveen, and I'm gonna butcher it again, is an accomplished scout who has completed 29 merit badges and held several leadership positions within the Scouts, including Junior Assistant Scout Master and Senior Patrol Leader. And whereas, he successfully achieved the rank of Eagle Scout by planning and executing a project in which he built a 500-foot prayer walkway composing over 125 tons of gravel at the Chimenea Shersewarth, oh no, I'm not saying that, Center in Or- Sir Swaddy Center in Orange. Then be it therefore resolved that I, W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman of Seymour, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim Sunday, November 24th, the day of Naveen's Eagle Court of Honor to be a day of recognition and congratulation in the town of Seymour." So may I have a motion to accept the proclamation as read? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Karen. Is there any discussion?
Just, I'm so glad you had to say that name, because Rory and I were there two weeks ago trying to figure out how we were gonna say this name.
I guess that I've known Naveen for a couple of years, so.
Nothing else?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. The Strategic Planning Commission will not be presenting this evening. They will be pushed to January, mostly because half of strategic planning is actually on the Board of Selectmen at this point, so. And Don Smith couldn't make it, so we'll just figure something out. Next meeting? Next meeting or January? The next meeting. Okay, never mind, so that'll be the next meeting, I apologize. Okay.
Did not drive that down, I'm sorry.
Okay. Moving on, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding charter revision commission. All right, so you got some handouts tonight from Attorney Leclair. And he will go through and kind of discuss what happened, what our next steps are, and then respond to any questions that anyone has. And then we can kind of take comments and go from there, so.
That's good timing, Trish.
I'll turn it over to you.
As you know, the commission met for a good year, plus charter revision, sometimes on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, before issuing final report. The documents you have in front of you, you don't really need to look them out. First document, which is Chapter 1, incorporation of general powers, right at the top. That lists the charter before the process began, and that's the charter of 2017. The next document, with the shaded border on the right, with the printed two sides with color, that is the charter as proposed by the commission with amendments that they suggested that you set forth in voting. The third document, which says charter effective 1/1/19, with what this charter will now look like, the town with the board of chair. And for my view, there were eight questions put on the ballot. The commission, the final report, and they can suggest special questions to use when selecting the new county board, depending on the election, or issues, that you know, November 11th, a few weeks ago. And why that was done is, rather than just one question being obtained, it would just, you know, it was like, well, the fact that we'll break it down, so you can collect together, with, you know, some pass, some don't pass, you can leave it in both directions. And I can just look through the questions at point, always three questions often that we passed, and one was an advisory question. First question that passed, by about 300 votes, was number one. Shall the town charter be amended to change the following? Specify the methods of appointment of deputies, residents, or our voters. Reducing this size of the library board director to 75. Limiting the numbers of members for appointing boards to the board. Providing legal notices to be posted on the town death site. Elimination of castings and lieutenant positions in the police department. And decrease the amount of special appropriation requiring the town meeting, 2,000 to 1,000,000. Those were looked together because those were all substantial changes that committed the commission, and you, on the not discussed one. Those were all approved by the board. The next question, and the item that was not approved, was, shall the town charter be amended to replace the elected board of directors zone, and the fourth year board of directors zone? The voters said no, 4,000 plus 2,200. So there will be no change, it will remain an elected board of directors zone, on the town board. The next question, shall the charter be amended to increase the term of first election to two to four years, and set term limits for first electors? That also failed, that was close, failed 3,300 to 3,148. So it was also true, failed as well, so the selection will remain two years with no term limit. Next item, shall the charter be changed, amended to change the budget, budget process, including the elimination of the annual town meeting, to the budget vote directly direct to the board? The commission recommended streamlining, elimination of the annual town meeting, that never had the required form anyway, to be a more efficient process, change some of the dates of when budgets were due, and notifications were due. Well, that might have failed, 40, almost 4,400 to 1,200. The budget process, and that's the same for the town. Next item, so the town charter be amended to combine the town and board of education vote, and that's what I'm saying, instead of two questions, adding one question to the town board. That failed by 20 votes, or 12.
That was like a 50-50 split on that, right?
3,169, 3,153, 15,000 votes, that failed as well. Next item, which did pass, shall the charter be amended to correct Grahamlin's spelling terminology, references to statues, updated provisions, reorganizing the section, reorganizing, technical changes. That did pass, 200 to 1,095, 2,095, where it wanted to leave Brett Grahamlin's spelling and reference. Some people didn't even want to change the spelling errors in the charter.
That's resistance to change.
Those are the spelling errors that people have come to know and love.
I'll back you back there. So at least it was, and it was reorganized, that's what I'll note, you know, if the elected board is up to mind, right now, it's 55, add over to the century, it's like, hey, you know, it tends to be more complicated. There were then two advisory questions, because these were controversial, especially though they were somewhat controversial, brought that it's best to see what the lawyers think about this, and help guide you as the body informs the charter of this commission. To receive information as to whether you should proceed now, or if you see a better commission, would be destructive, so study these areas further. One was, shall the board of selectmen undertake a study regarding the establishment of a town manager for the government? That failed 3,030 to, I think, wait, I should say, it failed 3,275, saying no, 3,030 said yes. The majority was, I, 250.
That's much closer than, the last time was, it was like three to one. I mean, it was a blowout the last time, though. It's interesting.
They still don't, they still did not vote it, but you should have to get this study, that's part of advisory. The other one, question was, shall the charter be amended to set term limits for all electors? Whether you should send this back to a new commission to look at term limits and put them in? That was 279, yes, to 1,116, no. A very similar vote, almost identical to the vote on Stellon Graham, but yes, those term limits in. Just amended the term limits in. But then, on the other hand, remember that your question regarding first electmen, the term limits for the first electmen failed.
Yeah. Well, that's...
They could be talking about other board, yeah, because I don't know why people do that, so.
I don't know what the gap is. So you're, so that is, that's what the lawyers said. Because the next charter now is reorganized, with Stellon Graham, that's directed. These little things have been changed, registered, buy members, no appointing boards. You can notice, when the rest of, and the town, everything else failed.
Expect to see a lot of people at that next town meeting.
Yeah.
Stefan, I'm gonna do something special for you this year, though. I'm gonna mix it up.
I was really excited to see last year's and year before's, as a member of the House.
I'm gonna do it in a little different order. I might do debt service first this time, just to, just to keep you, just to keep you guessing. Just to keep you guessing.
You may have to move to, like, the high school or something.
Yeah.
Because you might not be able to hold everybody.
Well, we've done it a few times.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
After working on the town charter, is there anything you can do preemptively to get some of the information out there so people can? I mean, I think when they can go there and read that at the actual vote, they're not taking enough time to even understand what some of those things would even mean. So I would argue that, only.
The information is out on the website at any time, and not on the paper, if anyone's reading. Other than, you know, you can't force the press to write articles about the town's question, but we have an article. You can't ask them, they're not, they're really, I don't know, if they're recorded, I understand.
We did have a couple, though, and I did a podcast, so.
Voters that don't, how many didn't understand the state of the situation, questions that I didn't know, they have no idea. I heard a lot of people walking out, I didn't know there were any questions coming out.
Right, yeah. And there wasn't a prep that said it.
And the town can only approve explanatory texts if they want to do the math, if that happens.
Right, yeah, just explanation, right.
It's hard to gauge people to, you know, focus on, kind of, the campaign. I wish I could explain why they want to have the guys go back and do opposing the term limits, because they know it's term limits, first of all. Whether they really, whether it's a known term limits, because they do want four-year term, kind of, knowledge, or whatever. The commission thought that was going to be about, maybe, to start, see what they would do with first electmen.
That was the original discussion, right?
Right. I have a theory. Can you read that question that failed on term limits? Can you read that?
The term limit question.
The term limit one, yeah.
So the town charter be amended to increase the term of the first electmen to two to four years, and set term limits for the first electmen.
Okay. I think that should have been broken into two separate questions, and I think that's why maybe it got voted down, so maybe some people wanted one or the other, and, or not neither.
I would guess they didn't want the four-year term.
Yeah.
That's what I would guess.
I think maybe some people were in agreement for the two, didn't want the four, and perhaps maybe that's why. So I think that's good feedback. I talked to some folks, and that's how they felt. So there's no way to vote for one, not the other, so they voted it down. But I can't rectify that with the advisory question passing overwhelmingly without...
Elected officials, sorry.
The problem would be, if you broke it down, you know, four years, and then the number of terms, if it's a four-year term, they didn't want to have two terms, don't say years. A two-year term, it's a two-year limit, that's only four years. Maybe they couldn't, they shouldn't have it later, it's more close, right?
Right.
If the term's longer, you'd want less terms, you'd talk about one, or is it...
Right.
If you're, if, if, while the crowd is trying to break it down, how do you do that?
I remember the discussion.
Oh, I have three questions. All right, so the first one is, how long until we can do the next charter revision, which will lead to questions two and three?
Can you start now? If you want to, you just want to, as long as you make it.
Yep.
As you will say, we'll look forward, as long as you can, you can suggest items the commission can look at. They want to establish a commission that handles the commission at once. It does not have to look at a whole, it could, or vote it, you know, okay, thanks, you're right, we're gonna recommend all this. But most commissions don't, they're cemented there in the same town, they know what the town, and they will do what you ask them to do. There's no reason they cannot start now. I would suggest that they wait till the general election, November next election, for anything about, some next municipal election, and charter, get it passed, because, not all the costs, you need a minimum term. And now, they're putting a fine job to vote at municipal election, and only one charter.
My concern is a general municipal election, I don't think we'd get enough people. I think we'd probably have to wait till the presidential.
What is the Russell?
I'm not even sure.
Yeah, I think we were talking about that, that was...
I think it's 15% of the people voting. 15% of the elected people voting, and also the board of board members, as well. It's probably just, like, it's not fair.
Depends. We didn't, I don't think we got that in 17.
But you have to pick one out this election, because it's going to be an, you're touching the town, and higher turnout, you're not only elected, but higher turnout. The question is, are voters more engaged now, compared to what's happened, and they're staying engaged.
Could be.
The worst is, you put it on, you don't get the percentage of turnout that won't pass.
Right.
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 The more the commission is good, you put it on.
Well, the reason why I asked that is, and again, I would probably target the presidential year in 2020, because it's gonna take us some time to do the advisory question, to go through, to talk about term limits. So let's say by the time we get that set up, it's the first of the year. Might take a month or two to figure through that, I don't know if there's enough time at that point.
It could be on that, it could be on that.
Okay.
A different month, right? Have the commission talked on this, quite, a lot?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, about the term limits. Lots of scenarios, we've gone, lots of, a lot of options we've discussed. Talked about other candidates, including, you know, just a good idea, bad idea, it's a good idea how we, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, that was a major topic, I believe.
And then what, do you have a term limit? How long do you have to be off? Do you have to be off for a full term, or a partial term, or a...
Okay.
Do you resign with one month left? Not be a member of the board of selectmen that run again?
Right. So for the advisory, for putting the group together to study the advisory question, then we can just name a group of people to study that and make a report to the Board of Selectmen, or does it need to be Board of Selectmen members? Uh, no, because that one failed.
You can still do that if you want. I mean, you could, you could select, you could just ask the voters to vote.
Right.
You can always form a committee, study something, if it was close.
Because that one was close, right? Yeah, so that's where I was gonna head, things that were like 50-50, could we make the overriding call on that? Yeah.
Right.
So you could still, that just, that was more of a little test, to see, do you know, are they really opposed to town managers? I don't know, some people don't know what town manager is, I, the limited pool of people that really knew.
Right.
Well, I mean, technically... I mean, technically, if we wanted, we can create another charter revision commission that could literally just basically do nothing and put all the questions that failed on the ballot again next year. I mean, there's, that is a possibility, there's a million possibilities, right? Like, the possibilities are endless once we start the process.
But when you put the commission together, they get the full right to do whatever they want.
Sure.
They can go throughout the whole thing.
You can tell them, right, right, you can tell them.
Yeah, but we could advise them, hey, here's the questions that were close, we'd like you to look at those again. And then they could do that, and then they could do whatever else they want, but it's a huge can of worms if we start the process. Not saying I'm for or against it, I don't, I don't know.
So what...
I have a question.
Go ahead, Karen.
Please.
Microphone.
Under Section 6.4, in the event...
Which one you?
I'm sorry, right here. "The Board of Selectmen shall meet at least once each month, and at other such, well, such as misspelled, times as it determines." Who determines that?
Anyone who can call a meeting.
So I think the first question may have... So anybody on the Board of Selectmen can call a meeting?
No, no.
No. The board shall determine.
There's nothing there on that.
But that's not what it says here.
No, what this says is, the Board of Selectmen shall meet at least once each month, and at other times as it shows, right? Means you have to meet a minimum of one, right? Because the, the, the reason for you to leave more than that, is another.
You may do so.
And who determines that?
The board.
We do, we follow the schedule. We set it at the last meeting. We set our schedule for the next fiscal, the next, yeah, the calendar year, I should say, not fiscal year.
This requires you to meet once a month, so you can't...
This is the original.
No, I understand, I understand lame dunk, I understand that.
So you're looking at, you're looking at the markup, so...
That's why we talk...
Not like we have a whole room of people here.
Well, that's why we talk each, each year when it comes up, do we want to drop it down to one meeting? But we never have. We just keep it at the two, and then we cancel if there's no, no, there's nothing on the agenda.
My, my question is, who has the authority to call a meeting?
I don't...
Because this doesn't say that. Right here. 6.4.
Yeah, it's a different section, huh? It'd be the Board of Selectmen, 6.1.
Right, right. Of course, 6.1, biological implications.
So it would have to be a majority of us?
Four.
That's not what it says.
One person, bring it up, and then the board should decide.
I just saw it, hold on.
Well, it's, in the event of a public emergency, a call for an emergency meeting may be made by two members in a quorum. But that, that's what it says out of the charter, it does, I don't think it makes mention of anything other than an emergency.
Well, we do have special meetings from time to time.
Right, and that's...
I'm not too concerned with this question, but they do happen.
It, it just doesn't seem specific to me.
But we can't, that's not a charter revision.
Yeah.
Well, we're on definite charter revision.
Yeah, you don't want to get, it gives you flexibility.
Well, I would venture to guess that the emergency was, that provision is put in there, if, let's say, something happened. There's a natural disaster and...
Yeah. And we need to refund or something like that.
You know, so I'm incapacitated, Anne Marie's incapacitated, something like that. So any two members could call...
I mean, under...
A meeting to bring everybody together, maybe pick a new first electman.
The Roberts rules, you can call an emergency meeting for other purposes.
Yeah. I, yeah, I can, if there's a state of emergency, I can spend money without approval.
Right. Right.
We do, yeah, before big snowstorms, hurricanes, we declare it, so we have it. Yeah.
Was that like six years ago?
We've done it a couple of times.
Right.
No, I was just looking at what the authority is.
Yeah, that's an interesting question, I didn't, I don't know what the answer is.
I don't know, well, it's not specific. I would still think if two selectmen wanted to have a meeting based on the second half of what 6.1 is saying, I think we would hold one. As long as any two selectmen wanted to have.
But then four have to show up.
The four have to show up. They have to have a forum.
That's what I'm saying.
But Trish is saying you can still, you can come together and request that to the board, but it may not happen.
Right.
You're in such a meeting schedule, it's like, you know, if you have a two emergency, you have to call emergency. You always run a risk of people not calling, or...
Right.
Yeah.
Breaking up government, you think about it.
Right.
And then, now, we still have to, if you're the first electmen, you have to take emergency measures, like, from the town, it's been, it's been last year. And if they fight, they can keep the budget, first electmen, off the right, emergency, nothing, you can't have that.
And then the last question I have is, on the, the appointed boards, whittling them down to five. Do we just take the list and chop off two names? Do we wait until terms expire and not replace people?
Wait the terms expire.
Okay. So, with that being said, item nine is appointments. We probably shouldn't make any new appointments then tonight. Board, right, yeah.
I would confirm the number on each of those before we do it.
Yeah. All right, so what other questions do folks have? So is it the board's pleasure that we entertain the advisory question, come up with a solution ourselves? Do you want to reform a charter revision commission to look at this stuff? Do you want to form a separate committee? And then what's the timeline for doing all that? If you want to think about it, we can pick it up at our next meeting?
I would like to think about it at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like, I, I agree.
Yeah, are we good with that? Alright, so then talk about, or, excuse me, think about number one, how quickly do you want to have a charter revision commission? Again, do you want to appoint the charter revision commission now and give them the charge of looking at these specific questions? Would you rather we undertake that and make a recommendation to them? So just come for our next meeting prepared to kind of kick it around. And we'll come up with a decision, we'll get it going for the first, first of the year. Because if we're going to appoint a charter revision commission, I'd like to do it at that first meeting in January. Just so we can get it going.
Sure.
Um, and then we'll need names of people. So come with some names.
Sure.
Because we're going to have.
Shake the tree.
We're going to have to reappoint. Alright, so now, so Brian. Charter revision. It is appointed board. That means we can only have five people on it.
There you go.
Yeah.
That is? Okay. I mean, we still have to file.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
And I would tell you, before, if you want, if you give me a moment here, you can just, you can, you can.
So those are reappointments, so they shouldn't have a problem.
Well, Brian Ryan's okay, because that's a, that's not a town board, that's a, a, uh, an agency.
Yeah.
Um, Culture and Arts has more than five. EDC has more than five.
Yeah.
Zoning Board of Appeals has five, but two alternates.
Two alternates, right.
So the alternates don't count, correct?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Can we look at who is actually attending these meetings?
He said we can't just arbitrarily pick.
Yes, but to Karen's point, if, if somebody is appointed to a board, I, I understand. What the attorney is saying, what the council is saying, I understand that. We can't arbitrarily pick on who goes on the board and who doesn't go on the board. But if you have people appointed to committees.
Who are not attending.
Who are not attending. Then why reappoint them if they're not attending?
We wouldn't reappoint them. I think what Karen is saying is couldn't, instead of, you know, Bob is on Economic Development, Bob is not showing up, but Pat is, we're not going to replace Pat because there's seven people. We should really be replacing Pat and removing Bob, I think is what you're saying, correct Karen?
But isn't that the responsibility of the chair?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so what we'll need to do is work with the chairs.
Yes.
Right.
To get those people to resign if they're not showing up.
Yeah, because these people's appointments still have an expiration date.
Yeah.
That's valid, right? So they.
Yeah, we got to let them expire.
We can't just kick them off without going through the proper channels.
And my point is, on EDC, the complaint was that people are not showing up.
Well, that's just.
Yeah, that was one of the, that was one of the ones I was going to use as an example.
Right. So we'll find the five people that are showing up.
Well, as reappointments come up, I think it's fair to just go back and find out. You know, tell the Board, because there might be people who want to step down.
Agreed.
So that people who'd like to stay can stay, and they're not being, not reappointed by default just because they're up for reappointment.
So Rory, can we, um, tomorrow, put a letter out to all of the chairman? Of the different boards, or an email? And have them discuss with their members who would like to stay and who wasn't, who wouldn't?
Yes, that's a great idea.
And just kind of get an idea?
Who doesn't show up?
Yeah, but they still have to resign, or they have to go through the.
Right, we just can't.
Removal process.
Right, there's a process.
That's not the reason.
But it doesn't, it's not instantly. It's not, they have to have an, they have to have an opportunity to come before us.
Because we had a person who was supposed to have been removed, um, tonight. We ended up taking off the agenda because we sent the letter and everything. The person reached out, had the conversation with Rory, and said, no, I'll start making meetings again. And so that's good, that's what we want. We want the people to show up. I mean, this person had some work issues is why they were missing meetings. But still, the Board asked that they be removed. But we, I didn't put them in front of this Board because they said that they're going to start attending meetings. So assuming they're going to attend the meetings, then there's no problem.
But to bring that up, that is the responsibility of each chairperson.
Correct.
To make sure their boards are seated properly, and people are going through those meetings.
Right.
Yep.
And that's my point.
Yeah.
They have a fiduciary responsibility to show up if they have volunteered to serve.
Right.
Or were elected.
So Rory, we can get that either email or letter out? Alright, so we'll get a report, and then we'll give a, an update at the next meeting, just to give you an idea. Anything else with regards to charter revision? Lots of comments, questions? Now, Brian, thank you for your hard work over the last year. Shepherding us through this. Okay, item number nine is appointments. Alright, so we're not going to do the standard. Or, we're actually going to go through individually because of our current situation. So John Hatfield Conservation Commitment, Commission, excuse me, it's a reappointment for your term expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. This is, this is the group portion.
Sorry, man.
Um, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? And just for clarification, this is, this is John, the father, not John, the son.
And, and we're sure that this is the same.
It is five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I could tell you they're all five, except that Parks is five, Zoning Board of Appeals is five. EDC is too big right now.
Yep.
I believe so that we can hold up on that. Culture and Arts, I believe, don't limit it.
No.
No.
Yeah. But there's a lot of members on Culture and Arts.
Mm-hmm.
So. Okay, so hearing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, cheer votes high, motion passes seven zero. Gary Popolice, Parks Commission, it's a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires twelve seventeen twenty twenty. Uh, motion by Stefan.
Second.
Second by Bob, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, cheer votes high, motion passes seven zero. Brian Ryan, South Central Regional Council Board of Directors, it's a reappointment, it's a one-year term, expires twelve fifteen twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Motion by Stefan, second by Anne Marie, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, cheer votes high, motion passes seven zero. Paula Chapla, Zoning Board of Appeals, reappointment, it's a four-year term, expires twelve seventeen twenty twenty-two. Motion by Bob, second by Stefan. Just under discussion, in conversation with Jim Baldwin, he said this Board has never been working as efficiently and effectively as it is today.
Good.
So that's a.
That's good.
Compliment to all of, of them. Would they have active, um, alternates that show up? So it's very engaging. So the meetings are happening now, which was a bit of a problem, you know, to Karen's point from before, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes seven zero. Item number ten.
I have a quick question, a good real.
Sure, on number nine?
Yeah.
Yep, ahead.
We just appointed the Parades Commission, which is about a hundred and seventy-five members. What are we going to do with that?
That's the charter.
So that doesn't, that doesn't come into play? So then why would Culture and Arts fall under that? Because they are now not in the charter either.
Or so?
Sure you do.
Might be. So are you saying that any committee that's not in the charter is not subject to the five-person rule?
So then we should.
Oh, okay, so.
Appoint Priscilla.
Yep.
Yep, you can.
If that's the reason why you want.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to appoint Priscilla.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Stefan, second by Trish. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes high, motion passes seven zero, good catch Stefan. Okay, so the only one we didn't was Pat, but Pat is EDC, which is in the charter. Okay, so Rory will put that on the list of things to do? Okay, perfect. Okay, item number ten. Uh, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tax Collector's Report of December fourth, two thousand eighteen, as presented by Susan Bowlen, Assistant Tax Collector.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Trish, second by Anne Marie, is there any discussion? Okay, make sure there's no conflicts. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, cheer votes high, motion passes seven zero. Item number eleven, we have no transfers before us. Item number twelve is correspondence. We have one piece of correspondence, uh, which is the check register. Received nothing else for the last couple of days. And again, just to remind everyone, Stefan, I don't think you were here, this is the invitation to the police party. For the twenty-first, I believe. Alright, item number thirteen, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comments? That was your second chance. Chris, you don't have to, just because. You don't have to, just because.
I was thinking about it, but I figured, why not?
Alright, name an address, please, you know, you know the deal.
Christopher Bowen, twenty-six Birchwood Road. Um, I just wanted to point out, as the Vice Chair of the Economic Development Commission, that the gentleman that you had appointed to be our seventh member informed me today, or yesterday, sometime this week, he will not be able to receive that appointment. I wanted to put forth Karen Robinson, who has joined me here for your consideration, to be our seventh and final member. I feel she, she's been coming to all our meetings and has been an active participant. We would like very much for her to have voting rights. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Hearing no other public comment. We'll close public comment, we'll go to item number fourteen, Selectmen's Public Comments. Stefan.
No, thanks, I'm good.
Very polite. Karen?
I'd just like to say that I thought the parade was amazing. They did a fantastic job. They incorporated children, which I think is really important. And I, I just thought it was an amazing performance.
Oh, I agree. The only, um, issue we had, oddly enough, is the sleigh was broken. So we couldn't put Santa in the sleigh at the end. So we're working on either having it be done by an Eagle Scout as a project, or we're going to, what?
Maybe.
Or elves. Or may, uh, I'm going to meet, a meeting with Paul Lucky next week. So I'm going to see if maybe the wood shop over at the high school can rebuild, um, a sleigh.
What wood shop, there's no wood shop at the high school. I just want to say that I thought it was amazing, they incorporated so many children.
Yeah. Yeah, kids were really good.
It was an amazing display, and I thought it made Seymour proud.
Agreed.
Oh, that's what I. I don't have anything, I'm good, thank you.
You have nothing?
Nope.
Alright. Anne Marie?
Uh, just to relish on the Seymour Parade, I thought it was, it was a great job done by everybody. There was a lot of kids, and it was great seeing all the kids involved in it. Uh, just a big shout out to the Seymour Pop Warner Junior Pee Wee Cheerleaders, who are at Walt Disney and performed there today at four fifty-eight, hoping that we get some news as to whether they placed or not. Um, and that's about it.
Excellent, thank you very much. Bob?
Parade was great, and I thought First Saturday went very, very well. Had good attendance on First Saturday, I thought that was, you know, very well done. I think the cars should be moved from the street next time. The cars that were on the main street earlier, goes over cars trying to get out.
Yeah.
But otherwise, I think, uh, everything went very, very well.
I was asked to bring a concern, which I've already said I wasn't sure if we actually had any hole to have fixed. But I know a few people who, through, um, Mary's group, are using the pool for exercise. And I understand the pool is very cold. I don't know if the heater's not working, and also, a number of them have complained that the, um, locker area has garbage in there that's been in there since July. So I don't know if the custodians are cleaning in there, and I did mention this might be a Board of Ed issue. Um, but those comments were a little concerning to me. I haven't been up there to know myself, but.
Um, first, I'm hearing on the pool being cold.
Yes.
I don't know, Rory is, Rory swims in it, so. Oh, okay.
Yes.
So, but I mean, but I haven't heard any complaints through, uh, community services on that, but we can look into that. As for the locker rooms, we're well aware of that, as is, um, the Board of Ed.
Okay.
So that's a Board of Ed issue. They're aware of it and working on it. I, I don't want to say the person isn't true.
Only because public's going in there, and that's kind of, I don't know.
I would fall out of my chair if there was actually garbage that hadn't moved since July. They may not like the condition of the locker room. I think we can all agree that it needs to be fixed.
I don't know, I have never been in there, but I know they have said if you, if anyone goes up there week after week and looks in the garbage cans in there, they will find the same garbage as there, the same wrappers on the floor. So again, I'm just bringing forth the concern.
No, no, it's not, well, meant, I'll mention that to, to Rick.
Also, I am sorry I missed the parade. I heard my daughter had a really good time there, and thought it was great, so, kudos.
Yeah, they did well. It was Mr. Lang's last one, so it was nice to give him a, a send-off of a, a good parade. So he was, I think he was quite happy when the parade was over, I think he was done, but. I'll believe it when I see it when he's not at the parade helping out, to be honest with you, so. Uh, Rory, anything we missed? Mr. Leclerc, anything you'd like to add? Mr. Stanek, last bite at the apple. See, he wants to say something, here he comes.
He does.
Excellent. My fourth grade teacher as well. So. Really?
No, I don't see that, but it's pretty cool.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Stanek. Alright, with that.
I'm making that.
Second by Anne Marie. Karen.
And Stefan is up.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.[1792.62]